This conference will now be recorded.
The board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there's generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings held twice monthly. We have three items on the agenda today. County manager update, Columbia Pacific CCO, and then we have the fiscal year 2022, 23, proposed budget policies and resource management strategy. We'll start with the county manager update. I'll turn it over to our county manager, Don Boom.
Thank you, Chair Querlin, and members of the board. Just a couple of things. One is, you know, the inclement weather the last week or so has obviously required our Public Works Department, Sheriff's Office, and really many other departments and offices to kind of ramp up and prioritize response over all the day-to-day activities. But I just give a shout out to all those folks on the road crew who have been working hard to keep the roads as safe as they could. As we all know, it's a large county, and so there's various impacts as you go through the county, and some portions of the county got a lot of snow, some got ice. And so our crews were out there working very diligently, as well as all the city crews and obviously the the power companies also. The other I just wanted to mention is that we did issue a public offering RFP for the North Coast Business Park today. So that went out. We've talked about this a number of times. In fact, it's been talked over numerous years. But we have issued the RFP. The deadline will be in March, which will be March 17th. And so obviously, we hope to identify a partner, developer, purchaser of that property and see it developed in the near term. We also have a strategic planning meeting on January 14th. And so, as you will recall, it was in November that we had the original one planned in an afternoon. I think it was on a was on a Friday? I'm not sure, but it was right after the AOC conference, and it wasn't the best timing for everybody. So we had rescheduled this, so that'll be on the 14th. We'll be sending out all the materials. The agenda is similar to what had been planned back in November, but we'll resend all the materials. But if you looked at it, then you'll see similar information, so.
I see Commissioner Thompson has a question there, Don.
County Manager, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm told that the meeting of the county commissioners in Senate District 16 will also be on the 14th. Are you coordinating with, I think Commissioner McGruder from Columbia County is chairing that effort?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. We are, and we know that that date has been, you know, has been on hold. So yes, we are monitoring that and will make any kind of required shifts if we need to. So. And so that's all that I have, Chair. Thank you.
Thanks, County Manager. I know that our Public Health Director, Margot Wellich, is with us as well. And I know she wasn't probably prepared to give any report or anything, but would she, if she is available, kind of give us an update. I know that we're certainly dealing with Omicron here at the hospital and talking a lot about testing and other services that might be impacted next month. So maybe provide us kind of an update from public health side. Margot.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, brief update. I'm still trying to assimilate all the rapidly changing information that's coming to public health in the communities, including education last week and certainly this week. Of course, as anticipated, we are seeing a rise in cases. This was expected, is expected, and we're seeing it locally. What we're seeing in our current testing data, all of our testing sites are very full and booking out days in advance. We anticipated this, so we will again be prioritizing testing, focusing on supporting people returning to work in a timely manner, as well as keeping children in school, et cetera. But what we are seeing, and it really supports the importance of boosters in that knowing that there is a waning immunity, is that we are seeing positive cases in those who are fully vaccinated, meaning they've had their complete series. But we're not seeing positives in those who have had their boosters, and we are collecting this data locally. And so I think that's very important information, and again, just evidence of why we want people to get their booster shots. You know, as you know, our county's done very well with its first dose in the series as well as second dose series numbers according to demographics. But we're not seeing it as encouraging in the booster numbers, and so we'd like to get that up. And again, we just had our Vaccine Task Force call this morning. We have multiple clinics and opportunities throughout the community to get vaccinated. And not only just the pharmacies, which are challenged with their own staffing issues, but both Providence Seaside Hospital and Columbia Memorial Hospital providing access. And then we're partnering on a regular basis with Providence, including today, to host a walk-in pediatric clinic, where our schools are sending all of this information out to families, as well as continuing to do outreach and pockets of our community. We will also be doing our homebound visits as well, including we'll be doing a couple of homebound visits out in Jewell when we're out there on Friday. We continue to assess the status of the healthcare workers and staff at our long-term care and congregate living situations to make sure that those who are eligible or need to get boosted have access to that vaccine and are getting boosted. We have my superintendent, weekly superintendent's call today at 11:00 a.m., so I'll get a sense of what's happening with the schools. There's a lot of talk about what masks to wear, what masks not to wear, and any barrier is helpful, particularly if one is vaccinated. We do not plan to do a mask distribution, nor is it necessary of KN95 masks. There's plenty of masks available in the community. We just want to continue to say that the most protection that someone can have is to not only be vaccinated, but certainly to get that booster dose. What we're seeing in the Epi data, and I'm sure you've probably seen some of this yourself, is with the Omicron is a very steep spike in cases, and it's, and then it just passes through very quickly. Those who are vaccinated and boosted are either not testing positive and are well-protected or having very mild symptoms. But our hospitals are planning for a surge in cases, and we know that's happening as well. So we continue to focus on keeping kids in school, protecting our most vulnerable populations. We do have adequate vaccine. There's a lot of talk going on about stay-at-home tests, and late yesterday afternoon, I received the proposed allocation for all the counties in Oregon and how OHA is planning to prioritize that distribution. It's not fully adopted yet. It's in discussion. Again, I need to clarify how OHA is distributing based upon the sectors that they're identifying as priorities. Hopefully, I'll find that out today. We will get weekly allocations. Clatsop County is not going to get a lot. They're using kind of the standard formula they've used for a lot of distribution, as well as public health modernization. It looks like we'll be receiving about 3,800 to 4,000 at-home, stay-at-home, or at-home tests. And again, we will, we have a testing team that meets every week, and we will convene. And as we've done throughout our response, it will be a collaborative decision and consensus based upon our data and the need to maintain certain operations like our hospitals, like our clinics, making sure that there's staff for our congregate living situations, our long-term care facilities, including our, you know, Clatsop Behavioral Health in that conversation as well. And so that's what I can tell you about the at-home tests. And as I get more information, I'll make that available. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Margot. Any questions for Public Health Director? Commissioner Webb.
Thank you, Margot. You answered a whole lot of the questions that I had. I got my booster a couple of weeks ago at the fairgrounds. And I was so struck by what a fabulously well-organized process this was. And at the preponderance of volunteers. Are we having any trouble getting volunteers? Or, you know, is there anything we can do to help? And I mean, I hope that when this is all over, if it ever is, you know, we're going to have the world's best salmon roast for all the volunteers. I mean, it's just amazing to me. And incidentally, a lot of those volunteers are people who are retired from the Health Department, which I was really struck by, but it was just a fabulous experience. So how are you doing on volunteers? Do we need to be inviting more people in, et cetera?
Well, thank you for asking and just again recognizing the volunteers. I will say it has been an extraordinary reunion of kind of generations of healthcare providers within our community. So, you know, there's always positives, and it's the darkness and negatives. So we are a bit challenged with volunteers. We have our dedicated pools for our vaccine clinics, and they just, they show up, especially when there's an urgent need. And of course, we're restructuring some of our operations. I was pulling a staff today to start supporting more of the pick. Our Public Information Call Center, which was quiet, and I remember sharing with you that we expect calls to be increasing. Well, they're about threefold right now. Lots of questions about testing, and there's so much changing run, who's eligible for what vaccines win now. So the pick needs more volunteers. We've been recruiting for volunteers. We announced it in our Vaccine Task Force on our website. But it's also a stressful place to be. You know, it started out answering questions about how to schedule that first dose in the eligible group, and now it's answering questions, you know, from testing to availability antivirals, to where to get vaccinated, to isolation and quarantine. We have paid staff who are supervising and managing that operation. Our emergency manager, Tiffany Brown, has just done an incredible job, one of the county setting up that call center, but the way we're able to use it for this response. So we can always use more volunteers in the pick. There's no question about that.
Okay, thank you.
Ships are like one and a half to two hours. But we have our faithful crew as well that show up no matter what.
Any other questions? I'm glad you mentioned that, Commissioner Webb, about the booster clinics and how well organized and run they are. I mean, it is a well-oiled machine, so we want, let the community know that it's easier than ever to get your booster shot. I see that, you know, we have 71% or so fully vaccinated that has received the series in Clatsop County, but we have only given about 10,500 booster shots in Clatsop County. This is as of the last task force update. And, you know, that's only about quarter to 30% or so of the population. So we really need to encourage folks to get that booster. And I think the sheriff relayed a story or a kind of message about what happened at the Oregon State Hospital with a number, an outbreak at the hospital, a number of patients and staff that were infected, that had been vaccinated. But those that were boosted did not turn positive or did not have positive tests. So they were not infected. So it obviously has worked in a lot of cases that the booster dose has been very effective in warding off infections. So we want to encourage our community to do so. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, sir. In terms of callouts and recognition and thank you, I'd like to also point out the Cannon Beach Medical Reserve Corps that is a cadre of devoted professionals. And I've been stuck by them more than once at the fairgrounds. They are so devoted and so generous with their community. I want to call them out specifically, as well as, of course, the Health Department retirees. So thanks to those folks, the Cannon Beach Medical Reserve Corps.
Yes, thanks, Commissioner Thompson. And Margot, please relay all of our support and appreciation for the rest of the department and all of the volunteers and all they're doing. And certainly, we'll be checking back with you next week for our next update at our regular meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next item on the agenda is a brief overview of the Columbia Pacific CCO. And I know that we have Mimi Haley with us, who's the Executive Director. Hi, Mimi, and I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
Can you hear me? I want to make sure that my audio is working.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I also have Leslie Ford with me, who is our CCO Housing Advisor. We wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about housing. But it's wonderful to see those of you again that I have not seen in a number of years and to meet those of you that I have not yet had the opportunity to meet in person. So thank you for some time, and we want to make sure that we have enough time to answer any questions and comments and requests that you have as Commissioners. Don and I had spoken a while ago, and I know that there's some things on your mind that you would like to make sure we have an opportunity to discuss. And so I want to make sure that we have that discussion. So it's really a very, very brief overview. And I don't know if Teresa can share this slide. I did send them in advance, and if so, that would be great. I don't know if that is possible. Great. Thank you so much. So while we're getting that deck up, I just wanted to let you know kind of who we are, what we've been focusing on during the pandemic. As I mentioned before, housing, and then really the discussion is the most important part of this morning for us. So I'm trying to figure out, am I the person who can advance the slides here, or are you?
Oh, I assumed you had, I can find the slide deck and pull them up if you'd like.
That would be awesome, because I'm a little technologically challenged here.
Okay, just a moment, please.
If you could, thank you so much. I really appreciate your help with this. And so when we get started, let's get started on slide number two. But basically, just so you know, we are a three-county CCO. In addition to Clatsop County, we serve OHP in Columbia County and in Tillamook County. At this point, as a result of the economic downturn and the suspension of the redetermination process at OHA, we have about 32,000 members spread across those three counties. That is more members than we've ever had. And we are also seeing that those members are not seeking the services that we would like them to be seeking. And there's a lot of reasons for that. Just general suppression of medical services because of the pandemic and people not being as interested in going into a clinic. We have increased telehealth as much as we possibly can. But it is, it is a large number of members, and we are concerned that they're not coming in for the services that they need. So, so I don't, there we go. So just as a brief overview of our network, we have nine large primary care clinic systems across those three counties, three critical access hospitals, of course, two of them in this county, three community mental health programs, including Clatsop Behavioral Health. We have contracts with four dental care organizations. And we do have one regional transportation brokerage that provides medical transportation to visits, to appointments, and things like that for members who don't have their own access to transportation. In the community, we have three local community advisory councils, one in each county. And then we have a regional community advisory council. And I do appreciate, I know Commissioner Webb, you've attended some of those council meetings, and we always appreciate your attendance at those meetings. So please continue to join us when and if you can. And we have a regional health improvement plan, which you see the schematic for on the right side of this slide, with eight focus areas that our communities have prioritized for us. This is a process, it was a collaborative process created out of a joint community needs assessment that was done in collaboration with public health, with hospitals, with behavioral health to understand what our communities really need. It included both secondary data review as well as primary data collection that included over 1,300 narrative stories from residents of the county to tell us what health meant to them, what gets in the way, and what helps maintain and improve health. And out of that needs assessment, then, we developed a health improvement plan that was really decided on by our communities with eight focus areas, including housing, access to the social safety net, chronic disease prevention, suicide prevention, trauma-informed care and how we build community resilience, and access to care for behavioral health services, primary care services, and oral health and dental care services. And so this is the framework of our network, as well as where we are really spending our time and energy based on what our communities have asked us to do. On the next slide, though, I will say that the pandemic has forced us to shift a little bit our focus. And of course, Margot knows that it's been all vaccination all of the time and now boosting and testing. And so we have, we have really tried to support public health as much as we possibly could, not get in the way, but add to whatever could be helpful. And also get out of the way of our clinics, who are obviously working hard to get people vaccinated, to see those who are coming in for services. And so we have suspended a lot of the work that we normally engage in with our clinics in order to make sure that they could devote their time and energy to getting people vaccinated. Because of the pandemic, we have put a fair amount of emphasis on food security and housing, the basic needs of our members, especially early on in the pandemic, when people had to isolate and may not have had the room within their own house to do that. We have, you know, worked to find motels. We have worked with our brokerage, our transportation brokerage, to have food delivered. We have worked with our schools that have weekend backpack programs to make sure that because kids were not in school, that they could at least have their weekend backpack programs funded, fully funded, so that the school district did not have to worry about that. So in a variety of ways, we have really tried to address food security in Clatsop County. Most recently, we've been working with Clatsop Community Action to help purchase a new refrigerated truck, for example, that would allow further distribution of fresh produce throughout the county. And those are the kinds of things we've really wanted to focus in on, as well as housing. And I have invited Leslie Ford, who is known to many of you, if not all of you, who has been with our CCO since the beginning and has shifted her focus and energy on to housing, which has been a priority area for our Board of Directors as well. And so I'm going to turn it over to Leslie to share a little bit about housing, unless there are any questions that anybody has on what I've presented so far. So Leslie, do you want to take it away?
Sure. So thank you, Mimi. And thank you to the Commission for giving us this opportunity to talk about housing. It's one of my favorite things to do. So, next slide. We've become very aware of how critical housing, secure, safe housing is to people's health status. And to that end, Columbia Pacific decided to invest in pairing and partnering with housing developers to increase the stock of affordable and deeply affordable housing in Clatsop County and the whole region. So the picture that you're looking at right now is our first project that was built or funded, I should say, in 2020. That's Trillium House, which is a development going in near the Home Depot in Warrenton, which will result in, I think it's 44 units of affordable housing. So that's our first contribution in Clatsop County. Next slide. Oops, there we go. So statement of need, that's the first thing we did when we sussed out what we, how we could best contribute. And as you all know, Clatsop, it has the highest rate of homelessness in the entire state. Our region in general is high, but Clatsop County has the highest rate of homelessness. And I know this is, this data is a couple of years old, but I don't think that's changed. So next slide. This is just a quick snapshot of a housing evaluation that you all commissioned, actually, back in 2018, I believe, which shows how much housing needs to be built in the region to keep up with need. I suspect this is understated at this point with the level of increase in housing costs and the pressure on the community. I suspect that this number has increased by a significant amount. So next slide. In the early days of standing up our Regional Housing Impact Fund, we did a number of things to figure out how to prioritize what we would contribute funding to. And one of them was, a part of that was an environmental scan that looked at what was existing, what was sufficient, and what was insufficient in each of our counties. And by the end of the entire process, I think what we started to say to each other is, really, throw a rock in any direction, we need it. There's not enough of any of these kinds of housing or support services to keep people in housing in Clatsop County or any of our counties. Next slide. So we designed the Regional Impact Fund, and each of them operates in each of our three counties in a way that reflects the priorities of that region, because our counties need different things, although they all need a lot. We provide funding not to bring a project all the way up, but to partner with people and developers and entities who have a gleam in the eye for a housing project. So we do, we provide funding in a number of different ways. Sometimes we're first-in money. With Trillium House, as you saw earlier, we were first in. And if we can contribute a significant amount of funding to a project, the odds of the state or the feds funding it fully increase quite a bit, because we've demonstrated a local commitment. So first-in money is a powerful tool. Bridge money, sometimes gap money, sometimes money to secure a site are all ways we can contribute to increasing the housing stock in our communities. And it allows us to stretch the impact of our dollars. So when we provide funding for securing a site, then it leverages the other kinds of funding that come into a project. Every affordable housing project that has public money in it typically has five or six different revenue streams coming into it to fund it. It's really complex financing. And then we also want to develop housing support. So it's a, I think there's broad consensus now that you can build a lovely affordable housing project, but if it doesn't include the services to support tenancy, to support the people living in those projects, it won't succeed. And we've seen that over and over again. So we're very committed to using our resources and other resources to braid funding into these projects so that they're sustainable. And just to give you a little thumbnail, in the projects that we've had in the Clatsop County region, we talked a little bit about Trillium House, so that's a brand-new, permanent-supported housing project. We've also contributed capacity We've also contributed capacity funding to the Astoria Warming Center. So that their staffing pattern could stabilize and that they could begin to plan for a long-term platform. So that they're not going from season to season always scrambling for funding. We've also invested some capacity building in Lifeboat Services. And that's a nonprofit that grew out of the Beacon Clubhouse. And they are looking to build out a platform for a navigation center. Which is one of the models that really helps to attack the homelessness situation just by coordinating services that already exist. And the other project we're working on right now in Clatsop County is to replicate the Iron Tribe model that we supported in Columbia County. Iron Tribe is a nonprofit that provides housing and support services for families who are impacted by addiction problems. So they provide a whole wraparound set of services to the entire family and can stabilize kids in the home. And they build out housing in order to provide a structure for that. And in Columbia County, they were able to put up a project that is now housing fourteen families. And they're interested in replicating that in Clatsop County. So we want to support them in that effort. So that's just a little handful of the projects that we have been supporting in the last year and a half. And if you can go to the next slide. In addition, Clatsop County, being a far-sighted county, has dedicated part of its risk share funding to housing development. So in each county, we have an agreement with the primary health providers. That if they, if they make their targets and we make our targets, part of the earnings goes back to the county, the provider system in the county. And they decide on what to invest in in order to further our attempts at increasing services and health status. And in Clatsop County, they took part of their earnings and have dedicated it to housing. So we have an additional 1.3 million dedicated to housing and we've already tapped into that fund. So Clatsop Behavioral Health was able to purchase a couple of buildings that provide respite and permanent supported housing. And we provided the funding to renovate those buildings. So that's on its way. We also provided some funding to do the analysis for Copeland Commons, which you may or may not have heard about. It's a historic building in downtown Astoria. And we provided the money to do the geotechnical assessment, et cetera. And it turned out that it was probably not a building that was within our scope to invest in because there's a lot of work that needs to be done to it. But we did provide the money to make that analysis and support the decision. So, so we really appreciate the fact that the healthcare leaders in your community understand that without secure, safe housing, it's really hard. For people to stabilize and to attend to their health. So I think that's it. Next slide. Is there another slide? So yes, so now to the questions. Any parts of this? Mimi, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, so this is the opportunity I know that we wanted to have to talk with the commissioners about questions that you have. Opportunities to work more closely with the CCO and ways that we can support your priorities. So this is just really the open discussion part of the agenda.
Okay, questions for Director Haley or Ms. Ford? I see that Commissioner Bangs has a question. Commissioner Bangs? Can't hear you. Still can't hear you, Courtney. Yeah, still can't hear you. Commissioner Thompson, do you have a question?
I do, sir. Commissioner Bangs, do you want to keep trying? Okay, I'll make bold then. So the CCO is a contracted entity that operates in Clatsop County because the county board of commissioners signed off. Is that accurate?
The CCO operates, so the CCO operates under a contract with OHA. We apply for a service area and OHA then determines whether we meet their criteria to be able to deliver in that service area. The, in the, in the beginning of the CCOs in 2012, I think it was very important for the commissioners to weigh in on the model. And I believe that that happened. Leslie was actually part of the CCO before I was and could certainly answer any of that early history. And, and it is also true that as we have moved through the model over the past several years. We have found partnership with the commissioners to be incredibly important. And an example is the regional, the health improvement. Plan that we created was endorsed and adopted by the county commissioners, I think in 2020. As a framework for health improvement for the community as a whole. And I'm not sure, Commissioner Thompson, if that's what you're referring to.
Here's, here's my concern because I'm telling you, usually I ask questions, usually I'm calm, usually I'm empowering. I am none of those this morning, considering that no Clatsop County commissioner has voice or vote in the governance of this CCO. Tillamook County does, Columbia County does, Clatsop County has nobody. I'm just telling you straight up, I want to be invited to every single meeting. I want my colleagues, the governing body of this county, the public health body, the mental health body, the governing body. That's the commissioners of Clatsop County. I want all of us to know about every single meeting you have. We have neither voice nor vote on your operations within our county. I find that very troubling.
So thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner. I was hoping that we would have this conversation. So, so I appreciate you being just straightforward and calling it as you see it. So a couple of things. One, we do have a nominating committee that is accountable to make recommendations on appointments to our board of directors. And that nominating committee does function on behalf of the CCO as a whole. That, we do have four representatives from Clatsop County. We do have to try and balance what the state requires us to have in terms of representation on our governing board. With the counties that we serve and the sectors that care about our work. And I agree with you that the commissioners care deeply about our work. In Clatsop County, we do not have a county commissioner. We have Pam Cooper from Providence Hospital, we have Nicole Williams from CMH. We have Vivian Matthews from Clatsop Community Action and we have Debbie tomorrow.
Else have, I do not care who else you have. In my mind, pardon me, I am, I have heard this argument. This is, this is so astonishing to me that you would, would not include the governing body of Clatsop County. That you would have other representatives and use that as a rationale for excluding the governing body of Clatsop County. When you're operating within our county for the benefit of our people in a function that we are legally responsible for. So please forgive me, but I, that is not what the point is who does sit. The point is who does not sit and it is not, Commissioner, thank you.
Okay, I appreciate that. And, and I will say that that has not been purposeful, that this has not been an excuse to exclude the county commissioners from Clatsop County. So if there is interest on the part of the county commissioners, one of you, then we would be more than happy to bring that forward to our nominating committee. It has not been purposeful though, Commissioner, I will say that. And I will also say that we would welcome that. And we are obligated to hold open meetings. And so we do post on our website when our meetings are, where they are and the process to participate in those meetings. And so that is available to anybody from the public who would like to participate in our, in our meetings. And so that, that is also available to anybody who would like to participate, but not to your point as a member of the board. That is just as general public.
Thank you, Director Haley. I think there would be interest to have one of our county commissioners sitting on the board. I know that Commissioner Thompson, both Commissioner Thompson and I would probably have interest in that. So that would be something that we'd be very interested in.
So I would, yes, absolutely. So if, as you decide amongst yourselves, sort of which of you has, you know, the most interest and the most time. We would, we would welcome that. So it's just a process of letting us know who and then pushing that into the nominating committee agenda.
Thank you, Director Haley. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, thank you. I too have raised this issue. And I guess it is in such sharp contrast to the other organizations. That several of us sit on that are multi-county functional. And we are there by, usually by the regulations which govern those boards. The Workforce Development Board, Commissioner Thompson and I sit on, sit on several of these boards. And we're not there as a courtesy to us. We're there because their bylaws require that we be sitting at that table. And this is with issues, especially as the CCO gets into the housing issue, which I greatly support. Because you all have much more flexible funding than, than a lot of our other organizations do. But I think we should be at the table, not by invitation, but, but because we need to be there. I spend, and I know Commissioner Thompson does too, a lot of time with the other commissioners in Columbia and Tillamook County. And we often talk about issues that transcend the organization that we are formerly a part of. And housing probably for all of us is the primary concern that we have. I'm sorry. Can you all hear me?
Yeah, we can still hear you.
Oh, okay. So I'm just very concerned that it isn't a part of doing business and governing the CCO to have a county commissioner onboard. And as an active voting member. I, as you have mentioned, attend, I like the fact that your staff is kind of located throughout, throughout our three county region. And that's very cool because in, in that respect, I have, I have interacted very, very positively with several of them. And, and, and you're right, I try to attend all of the Clatsop Advisory Committee meetings. And it astounds me that there are, I don't think, any elected officials on that group. You know, one of the things that certainly has, has come to my attention in belonging to some of these multi-county groups. Is that especially on issues of housing and mental health and public health in general, the buck stops here. Right here on the Clatsop County Commission. And so for us to be excluded from, from the deliberations of the CCO, I just find very, very alarming. And I appreciate Commissioner Thompson's coming forward with those concerns because I think it's very serious. I think it's extremely serious. And for instance, in, in talking about the, the Copeland Commons project. We have been, well, it's just that it, perhaps a little bit more communication from us. That happens to be a project of my church and I sit on that board. But there just needs to be more ongoing flow of communication. Because as I say, you know, ultimately for most of these, for many of these issues, the buck stops here. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Webb. And I think as we just discussed, getting someone from the commission on that, on the CCO board, I think would be very helpful. Can I ask just one more question about governance? Do you have term limits or folks, what is the, I guess longevity of those that have been on the board for many years?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, for asking that question. We have the operating agreement, which is our bylaws, basically has three successive two-year terms for each director. But our board, a couple of years ago, said we don't want to be term limited. You know, if there's somebody who's adding value and who would like to remain on the CCO board, then, then we would like to entertain that. And so we have, we do have some on our board who have actually been on the board for quite a while. And I would say that you balance that tenure with the fresh perspective that you need to get by, by rejuvenating who is on the board. And so I think there is a, there's a, there's a great balance that happens between those who have been with the CCO for a long time, know its evolution, know its weaknesses, where it has really progressed, where it still needs to grow. And those who come with a fresh perspective and a new set of ideas because they are new to the work of the CCO. So I think that, that, that we do have sort of a structural component about, about terms. But we have, the board itself has decided to waive that on individual circumstance.
Okay, thank you, Director Haley. Any other questions, comments from members of Commissioner Bangs? Ah, still can't hear you. Yeah, still can't hear you, Commissioner Bangs.
I believe she's dialing in to speak with us.
Okay. We'll wait just a minute here. Caller three, is that you?
I think so. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, yes.
That was fun. That was fun. Okay, so I did want to just ask a few questions, not specifically towards CCO, but just in general. So looking at all of this information and all of these numbers and the fact that we did this study in 2018. And that number, twenty-six hundred houses in sixteen years. And so that mathematically comes out to a hundred and sixty-three houses per year. So Trillium looks to be one-fourth of, of that hundred and sixty-three goals per year. So as, as we kind of moving forward as a county, county staff, what are our current new home starts per year that we have on average?
Commissioner Bangs, members of the board, I will have to get back to you with those actual numbers. You are right though, that if you, if you project out the numbers that came out of the study over the, over the study period. It's, you know, it is in that neighborhood of between around a hundred and fifty plus units a year. And of course, those are diverse units from, from both rentals and from ownership and all levels of affordability. But we will, I mean, we can give you what the counties' starts are, but the cities also obviously have, have a lot of starts too that are in. And we've been working on a dashboard with the cities so that we can have this information. So we will be prepared to come back to your board and let you know what that status looks like.
Okay, well, I appreciate that because, you know, that a hundred and sixty-three just seems like a really large number. And if we end up having to wait like an additional year while we create committees or have discussions, then that a hundred and sixty-three just keeps increasing exponentially. And as you look at that seventeen people per thousand house list. And how that is six times our state average, that is highly concerning. And so I guess I'm asking all of us as a board and staff that, you know, can we open a discussion in the future that? can we open a discussion in the future that, that talks about like how we as a county can immediately take action and start knocking out some of these numbers? Um, can we discuss with local developers? Can we identify hangups to new developments? Can we help look into grants to help folks with the? What are the avenues that we can kind of move across? And also, you know, we have that new legislation, legislation that passed last year. Is there anything that we can, um, do to help promote, um, just activity, building activity, uh, as a county and a community, like immediately? Because I, the more that we kind of slowly move towards this, the num, this number, the, the less that we are going to meet our goal. And I just, I really, I mean, housing's critical. We have job openings everywhere, but we can't find anyone to find, find anywhere to put them, any, any houses for those folks to move into. So, and it's not just low income, it's middle class, it's all over the place. So I appreciate your time, thank you.
And Commissioner Thompson, I want County Manager to, uh, to address quickly. He has some good ideas on this subject, so I'll let him.
So Commissioner Banks, members of the board, I think, um, that the county will be talking about this in an upcoming work session. We, as, as we've discussed before, we've been talking with AOC as part of County so, so, solutions to have some technical expertise, um, come in and help us do exactly what, what Commissioner Banks just mentioned, which is getting the cities, the developers, both nonprofit and private, you know, a lot of different stakeholders together and really talk about what that path forward is. The county does have property that we have discussed with some of the developers, um, as, as an equity contribution to the projects. Uh, we have some really immediate needs, which I think there are some options like, like, like micro housing options, which, which I think are viable path forward to, to meet some of those immediate needs. And we have some property that may be available for some of those purposes. And I know that other public entities also do. Um, it's just getting everybody aligned, um, politically, uh, community-wise to really put the effort into what it takes to get those done. Because as we know, citing certain facilities can be a challenge and we need the support of the cities because a lot of these locations would be in cities, whether it be Astoria or in Seaside or, or really others. So I think that having AOC help us, Margaret Van Vliet, who's a former Director of Oregon Community Housing Services, would be one of the folks helping us. And so, you know, I think we are on the cusp, but we'll be having a work session about that soon. Um, because there is an urgency to it and I think we all feel that.
Excellent, I appreciate it, Don. And so then how do I mute myself now? I'm sorry.
Our six. Thank you, Commissioner Banks for the question. Thank you, County Manager. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir. So I have been since 2010 talking about the need for housing in Clatsop County. I was on the Planning Commission, I've been on the County Commission, this is my, beginning of my eighth year. Here's, here's what we have, what the County Manager said about AOC. Here is the meeting next Monday, eight o'clock in Salem at the fairgrounds of the AOC County Solutions Advisory Committee. I'm the co-chair of that. What we are talking about, immediate opportunities, water, housing and broadband. Colleagues, we are working on this in Clatsop County. We are working on this regionally, as Commissioner Webb pointed out among our committees. We are working on this statewide. And part of my angst this morning is that it has taken so long. So forgive my impatience and, and my rudeness, maybe I apologize. But this is something that has been a need, that has been perceived as a need. We are on the cusp now of being able to take the administrative actions. And we, as a governing body, are well-placed to address the needs of our constituents. What the CCO is doing, as Commissioner Webb pointed out, they have more flexible funding. We have been disconnected. We need to be connected at every level with every organization doing this. And I am grateful to the County Manager for his efforts in that regard. Thank you, Mr. Chair. But eight o'clock next Monday morning, if you want the agenda, um, I'll make sure that you, I'll, I'll give it to the County Manager, he'll make sure that you get it. You are as welcome as the flowers. I'm going to be there in person, co-chairing this essential committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. We appreciate, uh, your leadership in AOC and we certainly benefit from it. Um, all of these efforts are going to take coordination, collaboration amongst a number of different parties. And whether it's childcare or housing, uh, certainly it, it seems to move very slowly, but we want to make sure that we're, that we're doing, uh, our due diligence and, and making correct decisions along the way. And I think we're, we're getting there and I like the County Manager's approach. Um, do we have any other questions for Director Haley or for Leslie Ford? If not, I, I want to thank both Director Haley and Leslie for being here and thank you for the presentation. Uh, we look forward to, to working with you in the future.
Right, thank you so much for your time and for the honest, straightforward conversation about how we move forward together. Appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it. We'll move on to the next item, which is the fiscal year 2022-23 Proposed Budget Policies and Resource Management Strategy. And our Budget and Finance Manager, Jennifer Carlson, will be presenting on this. Jennifer?
Good morning, Commissioners, can you hear me?
We can.
All right. Um, Teresa, can you share my screen? Okay, can you see my screen now?
Yes.
I'll try not to take much of your time this morning and I'll start with this presentation that you all have seen before. Um, I hope this presentation will help explain how important these policies are for our county and helps explain the process in which the staff prepare the budget. And what the commissioners and the budget committee should expect from us in this. So I will jump right in. Oops, let's see here. So by law, the county is required to provide certain services and those services are elections, health services, land use planning, law enforcement and jail management, property deed recording and survey mapping, um, road construction and maintenance, tax assessment and collection. And being able to provide these services dictates where and how the county must budget their resources. A couple of questions that need to be answered is what services do we want? How do we pay for these services? And how much should we pay for these services? So our budget is a reflection of the community values. And when answering these questions, the county staff, as well as the budget committee, need to take into consideration the community values. Here's a statement out of the budget policies from page three. Um, staff shall prepare fiscally conservative budgets and will seek savings wherever a balance between cost efficiency and the quality of public service can be achieved. So in our, in the county policies, um, it states that these policies will assist the Board of Commissioners, the County Manager, department heads in the fina, in the financial management of the county. The budget policies communicate to the public the guiding principles the county will use to follow as it prepares to come, in the coming fiscal years of service. The policies help promote a sound, um, financial management, stability and efficiency of the county's resources by following a long-term financial plan. And key issues that the long-term financial plan focuses on is controlling the size of the county's government by matching spending to available resources, maintaining adequate reserves and paying for ongoing expenses from permanent funds rather than volatile revenue resources.
And if I interrupt for two seconds?
Yes, please.
So, um, I just want to kind of provide a little linkage between the, the strategic plan and the budget because we're really using the strategic plan as that element of relevance um, for the actual budget document so that we make sure that the budget reflects the, the priorities of the board, um, and of the community as we go through the budget process. Because at the end of the day, when you have scarce resources, you want to make sure that you're getting, you know, your priorities met. And just in the conversation we just had, um, with the CCO, there's a lot of needs and it's going to take dedicated resources to actually meet those. And so last year, we went through the first year of the strategic plan and last year's budget did reflect those first year priorities. And I think that that process works well to engage a budget that does reflect the community. So as Jennifer describes kind of the budget process, I just want to make sure that the board, you know, appreciates that we are linking all the work you're doing with strategic planning with the actual spending plan for, for the county. So, thank you.
Okay, Jennifer?
Commissioner Thompson?
Commissioner Thompson, sorry about that, I didn't see you. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Jennifer. So County Manager, I believe that, and here's, I think this is kind of what, it was the compounding effect of reading once again. I'm looking at page, uh, 27 of our board packet. Housing is still priority four. I mean, year after year after year, I say housing has to be higher on the list of our priorities. I, I can't, and I'm told, I have been told every single year. So there's this cumulative frustration that I have. Why is housing still number four? Help me.
Yeah, Commissioner, uh, Thompson, members of the board, on page, uh, I think it's 29, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe that's the page you just referenced.
Seven and 29.
So this is, this, this list really, um, is a list to, to really serve the board. And, and what it talks about i, is what the priorities are for the discretionary funds. So as you know, discretionary funds only go in, into certain areas typically because a lot of our budget, it is already dedicated. And so, and so when you think about where the discretionary funds stand, it's not that, that housing isn't one of the top priorities for the county. But right now, what's going into the housing is our, our really dedicated funds coming from ARPA. It's coming from the federal government, it's coming from the state. And so this really is not a, a table that is reflecting what the priorities of the board are in overall program, um, strategy. It's really just saying, where does the discretionary money go? And so right now, the discretionary money does go into public safety and justice, public health, general government. It just said, it's just trying to describe what the priorities are on that discretionary funding. It's not intended to be an overarching, here's what the priorities of the county are. And that's where the strategic plan comes in, is to overlay that and then, and then that then informs some of that discretionary fund spending, but it also informs some of the dedicated spending, if that makes sense. And I may have just confused it more than ever, so.
Well, I, I just have to say, I have, I don't know how you can really, really rearrange these priorities. I mean, these are the basic functions of government, public safety, public health, general government directs. I mean, I don't know what you would displace in order to, uh, change them. Um, but it, I, to, uh, County Manager's point, I, I agree that this is, there is a difference between the dedicated and discretionary funds and this is how this is prioritized. But we will be addressing the strategic plan, uh, priorities, um, later this month, in fact, next week.
And that's, yeah. Members of the board, maybe what, what, what we'll make a, a real point of is that as we go through the strategic planning process this month, um, and in the budget document, we will, we will overemphasize what those overarching priorities that are coming out of the strategic plan. Um, and, and that's what's really important. And we will look at these charts moving forward, but they're really trying to set two different messages. One is just where the discretionary funding goes and the other then is what are the overarching priorities for the county? So, so we will continually work through that.
Now, thank you, County Manager. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, to me, in, in reviewing this, um, now for my fourth year in a row, um, I, I share some of, some of Commissioner Thompson's concerns. Uh, but I am also struck by the interrelationships of, of these, of these, uh, priorities. Um, you know, it, they are so interrelated. Uh, we've just heard, uh, from our CCO partners, um, about, that they believe, uh, that's public health, I guess, uh, that housing is intrinsic to a lot of our problems, um, relating to public health. You know, we, we know that when CBH, uh, has to make a home visit, they often have to call the sheriff, um, to accompany them. Um, you know, they're, it's sort of, I, I guess it's always my mantra that everything is related to everything else. Uh, and that because our discretionary resources are already programmed, pre-programmed, we have established, um, staff and work programs for each of these areas. And they, um, they are, um, they're, they're interrelated. So I think it's very difficult always to prioritize when we don't, when we don't have a lot, even our, especially our discretionary resources are really quite limited in volume. Uh, and, and so to me, the important thing is to keep in mind that these things are all related uh, and that they all speak to quality of life and, um, and livability of our community. Thank you.
I think that point is well-taken. Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Any other questions, comments? Turn it back over to Jennifer.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and move on from here. Um, let's see, is that there? So adopting the policies, by adopting these budget policies, um, a framework is provided for approaching the development and implementation of the county's budget process. When faced with potential reduction in resources, the county's goal is to continue to provide high priority services in a professional, effective and cost-efficient manner. Um, to, to the extent possible, across the board, reductions in expenditures will be avoided. Reductions will be made on a case-by-case basis. Um, the 22-23 Proposed Budget Policies and Resource Management Strategy are in alignment with the county's long-term financial plan. Here is the, the annual budget process, which starts in November and goes through, all the way through June. Um, the budget preparation is the first process. And during this preparation, we develop the budget calendar, we look at, um, updating forecasts, we look at assumptions, um, potential issues are identified, financial trends are analyzed. And like Dawn was speaking of earlier, um, we initiate that annual strategic plan. Moving into January through March, um, that's when budget requests come in. Departments prepare and submit their budgets, capital improvements, um, projects are reviewed and updated, forecasts are updated. Moving into the proposed budget, March through April, department, department budget meetings with management. We prepare the proposed document and we update the forecast. Um, the approved budget in May, we submit to the budget committee, the budget committee meetings happen. Um, and then we ask for the budget committee's approval. May through June, we move into the adopted budget. This is where we make our final changes. We have our budget hearing and we approve, um, the approved budget is adopted by the Board of Commissioners. This budget becomes effective on June, or July 1st, sorry. Okay, and that is the process. Any questions on the process? Okay, and this is, okay, this is the important dates for the budget committee members and the commissioners. Um, they start in April, you can see in mid-April, we will go ahead and get the proposed document printed and we'll get that out for distribution on the 18th, um, and get those mailed out to everyone for review. We will then present the budget message on April 27th. And following that, we'll receive public comment on May 4th at our second committee. And please note, these are morning meetings this year. So, and then if we need following meetings, those will be on the May 11th and 12th. And following that, we will have the public hearing and ask for the board to adopt the budget on June 8th. So if we need to make any changes to this, we will need to know before we adopt this on January 26th. Any questions or comments? Yes.
I think Commissioner Thompson was first there. Commissioner Thompson?
I would just remind staff that I live an hour out. So whatever time you set for a morning meeting, if you would take into account, please, I don't live in Astoria. Thank you.
I do believe these will be virtual meetings again. But if not, I will keep that in mind.
Thank you. I can handle virtual. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, I'm always disappointed when we assume that the people who we who volunteer to be our citizen advisors are asked to to attend daytime meetings because primarily those folks have jobs. And and I I think that also we have a lot of interest these days, especially with virtual meetings, of citizens just simply wanting to attend meetings. And morning meetings, daytime working hour meetings, I think are a burden for those who volunteer their services to serve on our on our voluntary citizen boards. And I would really like the staff to be able to reconsider these dates. They may be more convenient for staff, but that's not the point. The point is that we have working people and business owners and folks who have other responsibilities, often from eight to five. And so I think a little bit more latitude, a little bit more variety. These seem to be relatively also, to me, kind of randomly selected. I I don't know what, you know, what that's about. But I think in the interest of our citizens who want to know what's going on in government and therefore attend meetings, and also for the volunteers who bravely come forward and and during these couple of months, give an enormous amount of their time to this process, I think we could be a lot more flexible in terms of evenings and even weekends. There's nothing that precludes government activity from happening on weekends. Thank you.
If I may, Jennifer?
Go ahead.
We did, in regards to the date selected, out of respect for the Commissioner's schedule, many of these dates coincide with your already scheduled work sessions. And so that is the reason for some of those dates and time.
Well, well, I'm I'm sorry to hear that because I think that this is a case where we're asking citizens to do things that that are very important to the county. And so being convenient for the board, I'm not sure is is as appropriate. And I'm just very concerned that we have so little regard for our citizen volunteers that that we've chosen to preclude any any meetings outside of business hours. And as I say, government can function on Saturdays and Sundays as well. Thank you.
I was just curious, have we heard complaints from our Budget Committee members that the times don't work for them?
Have have the Budget Committee members been presented with this?
They they were made aware of this meeting today that where we were going to go over this. But once this has come to you, then we will present it as well.
Okay, well, to answer Chair, the Chair's question, yes. I have, I have worked very hard to get business owners on onto our various committees because I think they're a very important voice in our community. And so I try to always be be cognizant of, of, you know, for someone who owns their own business, to take all this much time out of their working hours often affects their financial income. So I I think it's an important issue. I think it's an important message.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Webb. I, and I I tend to agree with you. I just, I do like the idea of trying to knock out a big section of it in a in a day and setting a day aside to try to make some real progress. That seems to have worked in the past. And so I kind of feel, and and I have the luxury of being in a position where I can take time during the day to do it, and I know that others maybe can't do that. But I had not heard from from others on the committee that the times didn't work. County Manager?
As Chair Quillen members of of the board, I just want to kind of give a little background. Is that, you know, my experience is that any time that the county selects for public meetings will be problematic for somebody. Even I've heard from business owners that prefer during the day. I've heard from citizens that prefer in the evenings. It just, it really varies, and I certainly don't want anyone to have a takeaway that the county is scheduling meetings so that we're not sensitive to all those varied considerations. Because certainly, public involvement, access to to government is fundamental for really everything we do. What we will do is we'll take a look at that and see if we can create different, different opportunities. Because likely, there will be multiple meetings. And so we will keep that in mind as we go through. But I just want to just share that it's not staff's intention to anyway, schedule things that's only convenient for us or for the board. We're just trying to manage some very complicated scheduling and a community that has very varied schedules and convenience factors. So, thank you.
Thank you, County Manager. Any other questions, comments? Seeing any, so we'll go ahead and wrap up. Thank you very much, Jennifer. Appreciate the presentation. We don't have any other items on our agenda this evening, or I guess it's not this evening, this morning. Commissioner Thompson has your hand up. Commissioner Thompson?
I, Mr. Chair, I don't want to take a whole lot of time. I will mention that I am also a precinct committee person. And the precinct committee people from the Democratic Central Committees in the three counties met Monday night in Seaside and selected a slate. I think you got a, received an email from the Secretary of State iterating those choices. I wanted to let you know that when we voted, Clatsop County, each precinct committee person there had 443 votes. Columbia County, each precinct committee person had 555 votes. Philomac County, each precinct committee person had 199 votes. In Washington County, each precinct committee person had 1,795 votes. Multnomah County, each precinct committee person had 2,153 votes. So it highlighted, I mean, more of us were here from the coast, and so that divided up the total. But the impact of the population on the voting for these, I just found interesting, and I wanted to bring that to your attention. And again, on January 14th, all of us as county commissioners will have a voice in selecting which of the three candidates will be sent to the governor with our recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. That is interesting, the weighted votes and how that breaks down. So thank you, Commissioner Thompson. And yes, we will be convening on January 14th to cast our votes of the, for one of the three candidates, or at least each one of us has the ability to cast our vote for one of the three candidates that are on the slate. Any other comments? I see Commissioner Webb?
Especially given our strategic planning meeting that day, do we have a time certain on the 14th that we're going to meet virtually or in person?
My understanding is 9:30 in the morning is when the senatorial appointment meeting takes place. I don't know, Commissioner, the County Manager may have a more recent and accurate information, as he often does. But 9:30?
Commissioner Thompson, that's the last time that I am aware of also. So right now, that that would be happening in the morning. And then our strategic planning work session would begin at 2:00 in the afternoon.
And to Commissioner Thompson's question, I am going to have a phone call with Commissioner Chair McGruder at 12:00 today and just ask that very question and coordinate exactly how this is going to go. So.
Good. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? If not, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Have a great rest of your day today. Take care, stay safe, stay healthy. Talk to you soon.